Hey, welcome Mirmak. This is the August 21st Board of Commissioners meeting of Mirmak Villas District. Today's meeting is offered by webinar or in person. You can join the webinar. Basically by going to the agenda for the meeting, which is on MBDwater.org for today's meeting. And there's a link there that you can click on for access to the Zoom website. Or you can call 646-876-9923 and enter the webinar ID 87515407870. As a courtesy, Mirmak TV is recording this meeting and it will be posted on their website at a later date. And typically runs on local channel. It's changed now. It's channeled six instead of 20. So if you're looking on cable for that one, it's channel six. Alright, so call the meeting to order at 5:15 and we can first rise and salute the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands my nation under God, individual, liberty, justice for all.
Alright, so present in the room, we've got three commissioners, Aaron to my left, John Lyons to my right. And we got Ken Ayers zooming in. Ken, can you tell us where you are located right now?
Oh, like from my home, 19 Jake's Lane.
Great. So that's four. Will von Schon is in Germany, so he's excused for this meeting. So first, on the agenda, we're gonna have the Finance and Human Resources view with Kristin Mar. Alright, Kristin, you have the floor. Thanks.
Thank you. I gave you a recap of last year fiscal 2023. I am still waiting on the auditing adjustments. Our audit is commencing eight five through eight eight. It will be here Tuesday through Friday. But as of right now, we sit at 118% of the budget for the revenues and 95% of the budget for expenses for the fiscal year. Since we had done pretty well with that, we did decide to move water purchase line 60300 back into the budget. We had put it below the line to try to see where we were falling for the year, but we did well enough that we did move it up.
And then does that mean none of the capital reserves are gonna be used for that then?
Correct, for that for the year.
Good, okay.
And again, that still leaves us at 118% and 95% for expenses. So that was about 80 grand we moved from the bottom line up to budget. Our fund balance review for the year end leaves that at about 4.8 million for net income. And roughly 18 million for unrestricted or unassigned. We are using, I did, as I had mentioned last month, the fund balance of 30% of next year's budget, as if you guys are passing the fund balance policy tonight. So that's where that leaves us again, specifically your entries, which mostly are part of the OPEC adjustments that the auditors do that have a NHRS and our, where we stand with our this massive calculation that they deal with and give us a number, but it fluctuates. And since I've been here, it fluctuated from 30,000 to 500,000. So in three years, that's a huge difference. So these are all preliminary. Any questions with where we stand for fiscal 23?
You said the audit was eight five through eight eight? Do you mean nine five?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to be sure.
The Tuesday after Labor Day. Any other questions for 2023? For, for one month in, not a lot to discuss. Eight percent through the year. There are a couple of voices that did not make it for these financials, which gasoline and diesel, which I just noted. We have subscribed them. So these are more of a snapshot in time when I give you the financials. So, as I said, not a lot to kind of share with you with only having one month covered.
Yeah, actually happy to see that the sales, the water sales look like they're all more than eight percent. Which I thought with all the rain and the lack of irrigation, that our revenues would be way down on an estimated percentage.
A lot of that has to do with a lot of the building that's coming
Yeah, yeah.
On. I know that our customer service Amy has been adding accounts into our system every week as new. I think we'll be right in line with revenue. Fund balances of July, this is a very preliminary estimate of where we're kind of standing. Again, only one month in. And the fact that we don't have the year-end adjustments for the end of fiscal year 23, these numbers will change once those go in. Questions on 2024 so far?
Anybody any questions? I'm good too.
Trust activity. I did bring in the transfer request for the two trucks and the final four wells, four and five are still in there because we actually haven't requested. We still haven't received the money per se, so I've left it as a activity. But as of the end of July, we're roughly looking at 5.6 million for our capital reserve balances. And with the rate increase study, one of the things I did have them kind of portray is that we would transfer almost a million dollars worth back into the trusts. Based on where we stand at the end of the year and how much we plan on taking out. So to kind of wash things out. So that's, I don't reflect that in here because that will be part of March's annual meeting. Any questions on trust funds?
I got lost on what page we're on there. Is this part of this packet with the?
There is. There should be one packet for FY 23. And then another for FY 24. We should be still together.
Yeah.
And then maybe the last page.
No.
FY 24.
It's like halfway through.
Yeah.
It's like range.
Yeah. Trust funds?
Trust funds.
It looks like this. It's going this way.
I'm digging.
I mean, is that it? No.
That's it.
Give me a minute to review it.
So what's the basic gist? We're putting money back into it or something?
Well, this just kind of gives you an idea of where we stand with the trust right now. That I give you guys monthly what we're taking, what we plan on taking out. And then also to give you guys an idea of when you do we're wrapping up the budget for FY 25, how much you plan on asking for to refund the capital budget, I mean, the capital reserve during the annual meeting.
And you referred to this trust fund. Is this on the balance sheet somewhere?
Yep. So on the sheet just before that is your
Fund balance?
Fund balances?
Yeah, the fund balance sheet. If you look at down towards the fund balance, towards the bottom, it's called the committed funds, which is your trust funds.
Okay, so this is just
A snapshot of all of our cash, basically, and assets.
Alright, so these are restricted to exactly what category they're listed in?
Correct.
I understand. Thank you.
So on the next page, the capital reserve balances summary in there. You deducted the expenses that we are
Planning to for this year.
Right. Now, when you add up all of those numbers that are in the boxes, is that what adds up to the 5.6 million?
Yes.
Alright, good. Alright, I understand that. Anyone else have any other questions?
I'm good.
Alright. I don't really have any other rest of the printouts here either, but like you said, there's really not much there with only one month in.
Exactly. There's not much to say.
Do you want to go over these finance action items? They have a page here.
We reviewed all of the action items.
Alright. Okay, that's fine. I didn't know if you were heading out or you wanted to hang out and wait for that. We can, we can have you join that conversation later then. Do you have anything else for us on here or are you?
That is it for financials and then chart.
Alright, so that's good with everybody. We can move on to the capital improvement plan with Keith. Plus, is there any other questions for? Seeing none, I guess we can move on. And we'll remember to see you in a minute.
Yeah, I wrote it down too. We'll get there.
Alright, so next on the agenda is the discussion of the capital improvement plan. And I think we've got Keith on board for that one, correct?
I'm here. Hi, guys.
How you doing, Keith?
Great, great. Hope you guys are well. Yeah, and we just started engaging with Ron and Joe on some edits to the capital plan from last year. So we made some notifications on what maybe needs to get adjusted going forward. So I don't know what's in front of you. What do you have that you're looking at? Is that last year's CIP?
Seven 1922.
It's the one that you marked up, Keith.
They have the marked up version?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
It was on your table when you got there. Not the one in the packet. Underneath that paper.
I need a handle.
And just as a refresher, it was a couple of years ago, we kind of did a revamp on the capital plan with Ron and Joe. And we categorized the projects from supply side to treatment side, storage, distribution, and then equipment. And then some town coordination projects. We tried to show projects that are ongoing. And then we look forward eight years. And a lot of the projects that were identified came out of the master planning. The remaining projects of significance still come out of the last master planning work that we did. And the two or three biggest ones are the well site and the artificial recharge. You have engaged us to develop the preliminary design for those two numbers. So those numbers for those projects came from the original study. They're being updated and refreshed. So I think based on the work in progress, which is one of the notes I wrote, these will change, could change. And the preliminary work that was noted for FY 24, you actually moved it up. And that those, that hundred thousand dollars worth of work is in progress. So we're gonna move that into the ongoing column. Deleted a couple. Yeah, go ahead.
That, that's the 50, 50,000 each for Mitchell Woods and artificial recharge you're talking about. Yeah, okay.
Yep. It actually turned out to be 75, 25, but it was still 100 total.
Oh, yeah, okay.
But yeah, we'll move those to the ongoing. One thing that
I just had one more question before we move that clouded area, the 1.2 million for Manchester Water Works Emergency Connection Infrastructure. Are we planning on doing something there? I thought that was one of the one of the several alternatives that you evaluated, but I think we picked moving forward with artificial recharge in Mitchell Woods. I didn't know if that interconnect upgrade was still something we were pursuing.
I think if you go back, and I'm gonna have to go double check on this too, Dawn, but I think it was a recommendation period because it's your sort of an emergency to an emergency connection to Manchester. And what we have over there is a physical connection that's in poor condition. And I think in the terms of sort of a long-term view, it was identified as a project to maintain that emergency connection, you know, just up to standard. So it wasn't related to the Penetech side so much or the two AR and Mitchell Woods. It was just a commitment to say, you know what, it's an emergency. It could work both, a connection could work both ways. We could help Bedford Manchester, vice versa. So let's update our infrastructure. I'll double check back on what that recommendation was, but I believe that's, that's what it was.
Do we already have a connection?
We do have a connection. So we've actually used it. But I was just gonna suggest maybe we can bump that out. It's something that needs to be done right off, I don't think.
Yeah, yeah, that's kind of what, you know, my fear of showing that there two years out.
Twenty-six or 27 kind of thing?
Means that we gotta start preparing to fund that, you know, and I'm not sure that we're there yet. But my understanding of that connection, just so everybody's up to speed, is that it's, it's just a gravity connection. There's no pump there. And I think we can only feed the northeast corner of our system. Water will flow from Manchester into that. We'd have to shut off the rest of our system and isolate the northeast portion of it. Because the hydraulic gradient in the rest of our system is higher, so water would flow out.
So it's more than just changing the piping for the connection. It would make the connection more useful to us and to Manchester Water Works. That's why it's under 1.2 million dollars.
Yeah, cuz I think
It's not just like putting in new
I think that's a whole new booster station.
Be like a booster station, so much will be happening here.
And we also have an incompatibility on the disinfectant. We'd have to remove the chloramines
Gotcha.
And chlorinate.
I heard they're changing that though.
Yeah, you know, I thought so too. Is that what it was? Yeah.
That's, I think that's temporary though. I don't, they're not going to a long-term chlorine. I think they're just trying to fix some water quality issues they have. So I think it's temporary.
Alright.
Not the first time, though. It seems
I know. It's, it's not the first time, but it's yeah, it's been a problem.
Alright, so that, yeah, just, I just want to raise those issues if you want to look into it closer and maybe we can bump that out.
I didn't go back to the origi, it makes sense, I think, to bump it out. I didn't go back to the original master plan, but I did go back to the refresh when we were just double checking some things. And it does say, complete the improvements to the Manchester Water Works Emergency Connection to maintain it as an emergency connection. I'll have to go back to the, the original report to find out exactly what it is. But I think everything you guys described is, is the case. It's, it's not just a pipe. There's more to it.
Right.
So we think 27, 28, we wanna bump it out to?
It would say like 27.
I think the longer you bump it out, the better choice. Manchester Ben is chloramine.
That's very true.
Yeah, I don't know. What's your sense, Keith? 27 or 28? I don't know really.
I mean, I look at it in terms, if you got two major capital projects coming up, or at least one, ER or Mitchell, if not both. I would look at, at saying at least two years beyond that.
Okay.
So two years would be a good number. You know, if it's three, it's probably okay too. But that would get you, let you catch your breath for at least two years.
Alright. That would be 27, I guess.
I'll throw it in as 27 for the next draft and you guys can see if that, it's, it's good. The other one on this one, Dawn, is we had sent this off to Jamie to review. And I think the piloting work that's associated with the ARs may be more significant than we, we thought. He's asking that we add a line item. I'm gonna show a line. This didn't get, this didn't get in the markups you saw because it just came in today. But he's asking that we add a line for the pilot to line up with the the work. And he put, he's asking for a line item that would be about 500,000 for that. So for your next draft, you will see that show up in FY 24 right ahead of the the, the capital number.
That's not part of the 7 million then?
No, I went back and looked. Certainly not to that magnitude. We had some, you know, the engineering and stuff in there, but that's not that, we didn't have that covered. So what I've asked Peter to do on his refresh to make sure that, you know, whatever Jamie's identifying as work and his budget associated would be carried pro, you know, carried in the, in the new, the new number. But until he, I think, scopes it for sure, and you, obviously you guys gotta agree with it. He's, he's suggesting a target number of that. It's a budget number of that.
Alright.
And the other few odds and ends that we're gonna change are down in the distribution side. And as one of them is the PFAS water main extensions, I think that's we have two projects at a million and a half each. So I think we got 3 million there. So that's at about halfway down. FY 24. The other one you're gonna see an update on is we, we believe we need to do a, you've been limp, I wanna, I don't wanna use the word limping along. You've been doing it right. We've been doing, we did the rate work back in 18 when you're embarking on all these significant PFAS facilities. And every since, we do the, every year or two, we do a refresh. I talk about one in a minute. But I think next year you have to do a kind of a, an overhaul. So we're gonna suggest a, another placeholder for a five-year projected rate model next year. So that's gonna be added in the next draft as well. But I
Where's two and nine?
What, what's that?
So I come two and nine is crossed out.
Is it done, I guess?
Is that done and paid for?
Which one? I'm sorry, I didn't.
Two and Wells two and nine?
Yeah, it's pretty much not. We're just punch list items and stuff like that.
But it's not paid for. We're paying the bond for the next 20 years, but
Yeah, we just crossed it out just because you're
Issue?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, the capital worked on. The expenditure's done.
Okay.
The payback is starting.
Alright, so we're getting rid of those two lines under treatment facility improvements, well, seven and eight PFAS treatment, wells two and three treatment. Where those are coming out, is that what?
Yes, but I'm gonna add them down below. If you look at the bottom left, John, I was gonna just, we still capture them. We just show as work completed. Just
I got you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Alright. Last time I was here, we were still waiting for a part.
I, yeah. Yeah, I think that part came in. Right, Ron? I think the part's there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're waiting on the cable.
Okay, so both wells are running, all four vessels are filtering.
Yeah, we've been running actually minimum, minimum at seven and eight because of the whole change out scenario and four and five as well. Yeah, so we've been running for us about two and nine at like 2,000 gallons a minute.
Oh, yeah? Good. Alright. Yeah, so that was one of the notes I had here.
I was gonna come to construction day, but I had a conflict, so I sent Alicia.
She had to help us. Brian was with us too.
Yeah. That was good for her. She was, she was looking forward to seeing that.
Alright, and then the water model update. You have a scope for that, I think, right?
Yeah, I think we just delivered it or just about to deliver it, so.
I want to say I have a draft.
Yeah.
Looked at it, yeah, but I can get that out to the board as well.
So that, that, that's 20,000 targeted for 24, but that might go away if it's already done, or is there more to do on it?
Uh, no, that'll be done. So that's, that's, that's a good catch. That needs to get moved to done or deleted.
Yeah, okay. I did, I did think we were further along on that, so that's good.
Yep.
There, see. Uh, yeah, so the subtotal on projects, the 14.5 million. Does that number just come from the Warren articles? It's funny that it adds up to that.
It's probably because it just had well seven, eight, and two and three on that column coincidentally, but
So that's gonna be zero, cuz well, this is this, I mean, that's done basically now, right?
It'll go to zero, but I'm moving a couple numbers over like the hundred thousand dollars prelim design, so that will total up 100. It sort of gives you a little bit of a sense of what kind of active capital projects you've got going on. So the next revision, you'll probably see 100,000 there in that subtotal.
Alright. Those are really the only comments that I had on this.
On the ongoing, should we add the Penetech contract dates? The three-year? Reflect that in the ongoing.
The wholesale agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah, should that go in here? It wasn't here originally, was it?
There.
Where is it?
Top line.
Yeah.
Supply improvements.
Oh, yeah.
Wholesale agreement.
Is that capital improvement though?
It is.
The current agreement is
The first year.
Yeah. The intent of the TBD up there was if we ended up saying in a scenario that says, you know what, we're gonna per, make a permanent wholesale arrangement in lieu of doing maybe one of the other capital projects, which is really, if you remember what we're gonna end up having a conversation with you about in a year or so. Which one do you want to do? Which one's the smart choice? There was a placeholder there for a capital project. We would probably have, if that ended up being a permanent, reliable, long-term wholesale arrangement, there would be some work to do. That was the original intent of the TBD. We just don't know what the extent of that is yet.
Yeah, I would just think that water would be an operating cost itself, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, that's a good point.
We had done it for, for this particular fiscal year out of capital with the idea, see where we are with how everything works out with year two and three to bring into the budget.
If, if you think it would help, I could put in the green ongoing column as, you know, see budget for the wholesale agreement too. At least people notice there is, no, there's a budget line for that or something, if you think that might help.
Yeah, cuz we, are we funding that? We're funding that from capital reserves, I thought, right?
For this year.
I personally know what the audit is about the
Yes, we, we have money in capital reserves. We also have the budget line that I guess if
Again, just like we did with this year.
Yeah, but that wasn't the wholesale agreement. That was, that was the special rate from last year.
Correct. We can do the same thing. If we do, if we come like we are at the end of this year, we're done below the line.
Yeah.
We do well enough, we can move it to the budget.
Okay. I guess I was just saying, if, if we're trying to plan what our capital requirements are, if the wholesale agreement was gonna be a capital on the, from a capital account, I think it should be on here. But if it's not, we can always pull it off, so.
I mean, I don't think the water should be capitalized at all, to be honest with you. We should be making decisions about where we're expensing things based on where they should be expensed and not where we have money. You know what I mean? Like, it shouldn't be coming out of capital reserve if we're not doing a capital improvement with it.
The reason we put it under, below the line, under capital reserve, or taking capital reserves, is that from fiscal year 2022, fiscal, I mean, 2023 to 24, was such a Fiscal, I mean, twenty twenty three to twenty four was such a significant jump. Based on chemicals, our loan coming due for two and nine, that if we had put it in the budget. That twenty three percent would have been twenty six and so forth. So we put it below the line. To more of a, let's let everyone understand that this is our real budget. Next year, adding another two hundred thousand. To what people now know is our true budget is not that big of a deal. But the, the cost of chemicals, we just basically didn't wanna throw yet another cost into our operating budget. Because we knew the percent was coming such a large.
So there's not operating reserves? There's just the capital expense to take from?
This capital reserves, which we can use for the, the five different types of items that you have in your trust funds. So this would come from, I think we decided that it was water, water person.
Water person.
All right.
Capital.
Which we set up.
We changed it, right?
That's fine. I mean, this is all from my own personal life. I don't need to have a lot of discussion.
That capital reserve account, basically, if, if we, uh. Means it's happened to penetrate the emergency connection, you know. For, uh, uh, drug conditions, if the.
So it's more of a capital and reserves kind of thing?
Yes.
Got it. All right. We gonna add anything else, Keith, or are you gonna do another round of edits and get this back to us probably next meeting or so, or?
Yeah, we'll do that.
Okay.
The other one will be all typed up prettier.
Probably soon next. I need to get this into the planning board. I don't know when we're gonna have to do our meeting. I think it's September eighteen. I have September in my mind. I'll need to check on that.
Yeah. Well, whatever.
But it, it's quicker than normal.
That doesn't bind us even if you have to do, you know, if you need to go in front of the planning board before we see it. I think just based on the edits that we talked about now, I think we'll be okay. It's not gonna be approved or anything by us at that time, but. I think it's just to kind of give the planning board a chance to look at what we're considering, and I don't think there's anything that binds us to anything they say anyways.
They like to rate it.
Right? Right? All right, any other questions? Anybody on that? Seeing none, then we can, uh, I guess move on to the next item. Is there anything else?
You forgot the rate stuff.
I do.
You didn't do number one?
Oh, yeah. I wanted to get Keith out of the way.
That's what I thought you were doing.
You gotta stick around for this one anyways. All right. Yeah, so, okay, let's go back. Sorry about that. Well, I, I do that sometimes. Discuss and vote on a potential rate increase scheduled for October first of twenty twenty three.
Whole bunch of discussions that. First, we wrote him up, um, for, is it about him?
Is there anything in our packet here or not?
I don't think there was anything in the pack that I saw.
No.
It was just a vote on, uh. Fifteen, what was it, seventeen for seventeen?
There is something, I read, where is it?
For, I'm thinking under a thousand a month and, uh, giving fee last and then.
Seventeen five for tier one and thirty three for tier two.
Yep, that's right.
We, we said we were gonna do this later, and that's how we missed it. We were gonna do it with the, we decided we were gonna take this pick list with.
That's right, yes, right, you're right.
Thirty three percent for tier two. So that right now, that would be under a thousand. Um, because we're now monthly duty fee and then over a thousand.
Yeah. Cuz it was three, it was three thousand per quarter, so now it's just a thousand per month. All right, um, so I don't think we have anything more to discuss. We've already kind of had one reading on this, right? So we're just looking for an official, um, motion and. Uh, to approve. I don't think we have anything written. Uh, I don't see anything.
It, it looks like this. Very at the top, it was.
Yeah, it's under, uh.
By action items.
Number seventy four.
Oh, boy, okay.
So the fixed rates, like the hydrant charges and all that are going up by the seventeen and a half?
Correct. Only.
Right. So should the motion say, um, vote to approve rate increase of seventeen and a half percent? For tier one and the fixed fees?
Correct.
And a thirty three percent increase for the tier two consumption?
Yeah, and if it would help, Dawn, I have a rate sheet that summarizes all the changes. I mean, I can share a screen. Or, um, it goes, it's tied to our, cuz it, it actually gives the numbers for all the hydrant and fire protection and meter charges. To. What they're going, what they're gonna be.
Right, the percentage is, is based on the seventeen five for those fixed fees, right?
Um, yes, yes, they're, um, the fixed fees. Seventeen and a half for the fixed fees, tier one seventeen and a half, and tier two thirty three point five. That creates the twenty five percent differential.
You could also mention you were wondering us to shoot tax for the first.
Right. Yep. But I guess. If that's clear enough, someone wants to just say so moved, or if you wanna regurgitate all that, it's up to you guys.
Can you just set my mind on these? I've not been here. Is this gonna still put us middle of the pack throughout the state in terms of rate? Still below? We're going up thirty three percent on one? We're still below? Holy crap.
This, yeah, the state average, yeah, you're, you're right. You're right, you're right at it, let's say, but just below, just below.
And then correct if, if I'm wrong, but the state average is that of a couple few years ago or not?
Uh, the one that we're looking at and used in this model is twenty one, cuz they're not as current as you are with your data, so you're probably, you're probably much lower than the state, the real state average.
All right, when does the state publish their state average? Is that something that they come up with periodically? Where do we get that from?
It's kind of an ongoing rate sheet that you can get online, so it really just is reflective of what people have done to keep their rates current. So if somebody hasn't kept their rates current, then the average is probably skewed a little bit.
Yeah.
So it's, it's kind of a hard thing to look at, but it is, it is there. They do quote one.
And so where's that from? DES? You see, or where is that from?
You, it's, it's University of North Caro- Carolina Rate Dashboard, but if you Google on your Google thing, New Hampshire DES. Water rate dashboard, you will get access to it, and you can look up anybody's in the state.
I can send you the URL.
Thought, I was just curious where, uh, where the numbers come from, that's all.
They had, they ask every year, but because we had shifted to October, I missed the cutoff to say this.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay.
So I'm sure I'm not the only one, so as he says, some of the numbers may be skewed a little in terms of. Uh, updated.
Yeah.
Okay, it's, if for those who may get asked about this, what you wanna have handy is our letter of June fifteenth, twenty twenty three. It's four pages. Two pages of text, sample bills, and a summary of the rates. Changes. That's the, that's the handy summary of what's, what's happening if you vote this in.
Yep. All right.
Wait for motion?
Go for it.
Yes, sure, yeah.
All right, I'd like to move that we, uh. Approve a seventeen and a half percent increase for tier one rates, thirty three and a half, thirty three percent for tier two rates. And implement that October first of this year.
Keith, you said thirty three and a half, is that correct?
It's just correct that to thirty three and a half if you're. Okay.
Great. And then also you might wanna put the seventeen and a half percent for hydrant fees and fixed, fixed charges, I guess.
Yeah, that.
All right, there's a motion by John on the table?
I'll second.
All right, we got a second by Erin. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Being none, I'll call a question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ken, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right, so that is four in favor, zero opposed. No oppositions, no abstentions. Four zero zero. Um, good. I think we're good on that. And, uh. Let's see. Keith, are you on for anything else here, or, um?
I don't think so, unless you needed something. I will just say that, I will just say, I know you're going into the fund balance policy. I will just say we worked closely with your staff to make sure the rate increase you just posted is consistently posed fund balancing policy, so. So it's all tying together.
All right, that's good. Are there any action items for?
Underwood here, let me just see, uh.
Yes, um, I think. And it's, it's updated, it says some. Times items on here that have a three two eight or seven seventeen and other ones that look like the weekly.
Yeah, I noticed a lot of those too.
Thinking I might have got the wrong ones.
Sorry, Jill, I couldn't hear you. Can you repeat that?
Oh, the, uh, action items. Um, the one that you sent over still has, it has date marked complete. There's a couple of them on here. There, we're showing completion on seven seventeen, but there's a bunch more that. Should be off, so I think we're gonna just have to go through this whole thing again.
Yeah, like number forty seven, forty nine. Uh, fifty seven, those all say discussed at the August meeting. Which is today. And I don't think we're gonna have those for discussion. So maybe.
Number two should, um, says July BOC meeting, that probably should be August. But there's, I have a lot of changes on here.
Okay, um.
We'll go through those afterwards, but it does look like Underwood. I'm not sure when you underwood. Forty seven.
Okay. The July meeting was the meeting that I wasn't there for, so I didn't actually hide any of those ones?
Yeah, so I think we're just gonna go through them again, but two on here from Underwood for Underwood were. Metrics calculation, which Keith, I think, didn't we hit that last meeting?
Yeah, the, uh, update the asset value and the calculation metrics.
Yeah, we did hit that last meeting. I mean, I, I considered that one done as in. Yeah. Um, because we're addressing it in the rate adjustments. I know you guys asked questions about the SDC. We kind of felt it was solid where it was. So if, if there's an agreement on that, then we're done with that one. And I thought we were kind of, we're done with the corrosion control and water quality for now. Think there's a, you know, there'll be more actions as tracking continues, but.
Yeah, I think we, I think we voted to retire those at the last meeting.
Begin as well.
So maybe that's, just hasn't been updated here, okay?
Okay.
That was the action items, but as far as Keith, those either have anything on here.
Yeah, I don't see anything else on Underwood's plates. I think, um, I think you're good if you, if you wanna go.
All right. Well, thanks, guys. Good to see you.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, take, take care. Bye-bye.
Bye. All right, so we're moving on to the proposed fund balance policy, second reading.
And, uh. What I had updated with, or the only thing I updated is on page three of the policy in yellow.
Right.
You wanted to keep it open in terms of not. Having it be thirty three percent or more. You wanted to be able to either do less or more, so I. Broadened that paragraph.
So this, I think we didn't wanna get, um.
Too specific.
Yeah, too required, like a requirement that we have to do the thirty three percent, and that's where the. The next, um, sentence about the board reserves the right to increase or decrease this percentage based on the district needs and the recommended industry standards, is that right?
Correct.
And then the word of a goal in there implies that it's not a requirement, it's just a goal, right? Right, that's what I remember too. I think it's really the same thing that will help you remember that from the last meeting or not, uh, having not been present. Maybe not. Uh, so. Is there anything official vote you're looking at at this point?
If that is to your liking, then yes, to vote to put this. Into action.
All right. Does anybody have any other questions, um, before we may entertain a motion on this? I think I'm okay with it. It's, it was just that one thing we wanna change, as far as I remember. It looks like it's done.
I'm good.
Yeah, I think I'm good.
Yeah.
All right. So I guess we're just looking for a motion to approve the fund balance policy number twenty three dash zero one dash A dated June tenth. Should that be dated?
That's when I wrote it, other than the change, but so I can do revised.
Okay. So revised as of this meeting?
Yeah.
I will make that motion as soon.
Put it as revised, it needs to be the execution date because it has, was that accepted and then revised? It's just accepted as is.
All right, so you're gonna.
That'll be the date, yeah.
Delete the, delete the revised date and the revised by and just make the effective date?
Today's date.
Yeah, all right, I guess you don't need to fill in those other things. Yeah, it says pending, just put.
Yep.
Today's date in there. All right, motion by, um, Erin, I believe, right?
Yeah.
Second.
Second by John. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the fund balance policy signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ken, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right, that's four zero zero. No opposition, no abstentions. Um, so that's number three. Uh, then we're looking at, uh, we don't actually have the minutes from the July seventeenth meeting. I think we're gonna table those.
Yeah, we have abbreviated version.
Abbreviated.
Because Anna was not there.
Right.
She's, she's putting together with more detail now. Get that one afterwards.
Do we need to vote table?
We do, but do we, we don't wanna approve the abbreviated ones? Then we'd have to, we'd have to. Amend them for the permanent one. You can't, yeah, well. You can, I think we only need a vote to table them, right?
The minutes?
I can vote for them.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to table the minutes from July seventeen.
Second.
All right, motion to table the minutes from July seventeenth made by Erin, second by John. Any other questions, comments on those? If not, we'll entertain a vote. All those in favor of approving, um, sorry, tabling the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Ken, how do you vote on that?
Aye.
All right, so it's four zero zero in favor of. Looking for. Uh, tabling those minutes. Um, at this point, I think this is the time we're speaking about minutes. Look for a motion to seal the minutes of the non-public meeting we just had today. So move August eighteen.
Second.
I think it's the twenty first, twenty first. August twenty first. All right, motion by John to seal the non-public minutes. And, uh, second by Erin. Those are the non-public minutes of today's meeting, August twenty first. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
We have to do a roll call vote for that, for this.
Yeah.
Harry said.
Okay, Ken, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right, Erin?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Myself in favor, so that's four zero zero to, uh, seal those minutes. All right, so we're good there. So now we can move on to the action items. I know there's, um, probably gonna be a lot of confusion on these with the dates that haven't been updated.
I've gotten through and updated, gonna be. Call a call on next, I can help.
All right, so number two, I flagged a lot of the dates that I thought needed to be changed out, so, um.
Two again, but August, and that's, so that's in your packet. For this meeting.
All right, what is that?
The date to August. November. To November.
Oh, yeah, that's right. It was in our packet. Okay, so the number two is going, that's gonna be an ongoing thing moved out till November, next meeting in November. Number twenty three, looks like that was slated for September.
It's in the packet this month, so. We do, we get the results back in time.
Yes.
So it can, but that I guess to correct it in November as well.
I think in the packet, I only saw one sample site. Was it, um? I got the Winchester Dry.
I got the Winchester Dry. And that's all I have. Is it in the paper packet?
No, I almost knew Winchester Drive too.
Oh, you know, when I betched it. It was one, it was all in one pack, and I betched different one in each packet. It's like a Bedford Road. You probably have Winchester.
All right, all right, is that what?
Oh, I must have, I have Hutchinson.
Oh, all right.
Oh, we'll, we've been in September. How's that?
Let's um, let's just put that for next month and just give us the same table altogether.
But that brings up another, something I was gonna bring up under old business. All right, new business. Do we want to continue doing the distribution system? We were.
Um. Yeah, I guess.
Maybe do it only when we, if we use.
Well, it's really just the short chain.
Yeah, I mean, you should have put it, it's not gonna change in the pipes, right?
Send us twelve hundred bucks.
Yeah, we do it.
But per event, it's, we could, per settling event, it's twenty-one hundred dollars.
I'm freaking out, what are you doing, a quarterly? I would like to keep it. At least then we know what's going on with the short chains and stuff, but. I'm just one guy. It's twenty-one hundred a year that would save.
Yeah, but if we just do it at the point of entry of each. Please, you get the numbers you're looking. You wouldn't expect them to change throughout the distribution system.
Well, you got some breakthrough of short chains and some treatment plants and not others, and then you have Pena Chuck, so.
We planned on whenever we use Pena Chuck, we go out and sample anyways to set an express.
So we, we sample.
Pena Chuck consideration, yeah.
But we have it this year, but.
We haven't used it.
We have a guess.
Yeah. It's twenty-one hundred a quarter. I mean, that's, what's that, uh eighty-four hundred bucks a year?
Well, I'll maybe cut it in half. Instead of doing quarterly, maybe do a half a year.
The way we have it set up is that it's. Points that are central to the mixture. So we're between four and five, seven, eight, two and nine, we pick out the system, there's. Reds.
Yeah.
What if we did it yearly? Being that we want it when we're hooked up to Pena Chuck. Most likely, but if we don't hook up to Pena Chuck, we just do it once a year.
So we've sampled Pena Chuck monthly? Yeah, cause I don't remember seeing any for a while, but that's because it was probably not on. I mean, what would be good is, I think, once we sample Pena Chuck, we're gonna see this P F O A and P F O S. You know, five or six things in there. They're gonna be low single digits, but. This can tell us in our distribution system if it. Goes to non-detect.
Well, we're gonna sample something close enough to the tap, to where it blends.
Oh, that's that new connection you uh made over there, that valve or whatever?
Yep.
All right.
Just see if this. Hopefully there's a blend, that's that, that was the goal of. Directing all the water into the twenty-inch. Goes through there.
Whenever there's a change, we go out and sample what's closest to them, or and then some places around that represent it as well.
Um, well. I mean, it's up to you guys if you want to propose something less than. I I I'd like to keep it at this point. I don't know.
Um, there's still a short, like you said, there's still short chains.
There is.
One out there, so.
And I think that's kind of given us an idea what's going where. I know people have asked for this in the past. But. I mean, eighty-four hundred dollars just to answer a few questions, you know?
And we wanna, we do less of a. Really, quite.
Less sites.
Yeah, just.
Not the whole list, but then test for P F B A, the gift way.
Yeah.
Get tricked out.
Oh, yeah?
You get much of a discount there?
We want P F B A on next, that's sure. Shortest on the phrase they first.
Yeah, P F B A, P F P, A. Uh. It's like. Three of them that we see.
So why don't we do that? Then when if we do you. When we open up Pena Chuck, we can increase it, you know, to back to the. If last P F O A.
Yeah, I would do the whole um.
Yeah.
Cause Pena Chuck does have low level P F O A, P F O S in there. So I'd like to see what's coming. From there. Um.
All right. What do we save them by doing that?
I don't know how much.
Four hundred dollars a year. If we not to indicate.
No, on the cost of.
Yeah, I would check with.
Cost of the test.
Yeah.
The big cost of the test is the instrument. It's like half a million dollars. So how many compounds you're running is gonna matter very little.
A lot. Cause we're doing twenty-six compounds.
Yeah. If you do the same method, the same amount of work's required pretty much to do it. Same amount of. I don't think it's gonna change a lot. But if that way, I'm paying the same on five thirty-seven for six compounds as I am for eighteen.
Are you going through that one?
Till I get my lab up and running.
Yeah. Will you pay a per? First pound per cent. Or say for one site.
I pay a lot less than you guys. I pay. Well, at five thirty-three, I paid you forty.
Eight twenty-five.
I know you do. Um, but five thirty-seven, I pay hundred fifty.
Is that a sample blank? No, right?
Blank, they don't blank, I could be half the cost. And that's probably gonna go away in the next couple of years. It's probably gonna be full cost.
Um.
So yeah, you might be able to get some discount. You probably get more of a discount if you just do less sites or less frequency.
Why don't, why don't you? Yeah, why don't you call and see if does it, this this component for less parameters? And then also maybe out of all of the sites that you sample. Maybe there's some that you might want to. Forego. I don't know what, I mean, I don't know how they were picked as far as like just kind of distributed out through, you know, right?
Yeah, kind of space it out from the town.
Right.
Cause it's, we wouldn't be sampling for, kept it a quarterly for a couple of months anyway, so we're gonna back to the board with pricing and.
Yeah.
So let me ask you this. Are there any sample sites in the high pressure zone?
Yeah.
How many? Cause you could probably get rid of those. And just sample at the pump house, that is, that's the booster station have a sample tap. Cause all the water in the high pressure zone is all going through like one pump.
That is true.
Pump station.
There is two sites.
So I would think whoever's in the high pressure zone is consistent. So maybe if you wanna just, if there's a sample tap in the uh booster station.
There is a, we can put one in.
Right, so maybe we we can get rid of all the high pressure. Uh sites. And just do one in the booster stations. Cause the only difference you're gonna get there is if you. Takes three hours to go from one site to the next and make.
Drop one of the sites just in case the booster isn't running when we go to take a sample, but it's.
Well, you can always put it in hand, right?
That's what I'm saying, just drop one site. So instead of dropping both and add the booster. We'll just drop one site.
All right. Okay. And then if there's other ones that you might wanna think that we don't need. You know. Do those two. But I think, I think, yeah, bring it back for next month. You'll have the numbers if there's any savings on the lab, but it probably isn't what John's saying.
Might be a little, but uh.
Yeah.
I think I paid two-ten for nine on five thirty-three, something like that. So. Thirty dollars off.
Unless you guys want to go ahead with it, I I I would prefer to look into it a little more before we decide what's the drop.
True.
All right, uh so I think we were on action items, right? Um. See where that was.
We haven't done number forty yet.
Right. Um. I don't even think we've been talking about it. Open house. That was pushed off, right?
We have, and I could research.
Oh, okay.
I mentioned something about food trucks. Um, that's a really, really hard thing to do. Because they not gonna show up without a minimum.
Oh.
And so all the trucks that I talked to, they, they were either already booked. Where the minimum is fifteen hundred to two thousand. On a Saturday, it's two thousand eight ninety-five is the minimum. Um, unavailable. Increase six barbecue, seventy-five people or more. While the Roland Grill is twenty-six to a hundred people for the barbecue package. Um. These other ones were not. Were reachable. They were booked, the contagious food truck booked. So in looking at, um, we had construction field day and. We looked to, uh, there was a lot of large subs kind of in the form of, um, the platters.
Huh.
I think that's. It's all run. This year less expensive, and if they don't all go, you know, we give a bunch of people or get into the staff for lunch the next day. We won't be wasting.
Yeah.
Five people show up and we pay almost three grand.
I mean, we gotta be frugal, you know, our customers' money. I think that makes a lot of sense for sure.
Sounds good to me.
What was the audience for this? Like, just anyone? Just open it up to everyone?
Cool, yeah.
Yeah. So would there be like an R S V P? So who would know who's coming or probably not, right? Probably just, hey, we're having an open house. If you're free, come, yeah.
Kind of what I was thinking.
So really don't know if we're gonna get like ten people or fifty people, right?
I assume this is two and nine treatment plants that we're doing?
Yes. Yeah, that'd be good. I haven't even been there myself.
No.
Nothing.
Same.
Um. We're looking at a weekend on this or? Yeah.
Saturday. Yes, Saturday.
Oh. This Saturday. I guess probably a little too early.
That looks like it's. Looks like this Saturday is supposed to rain anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah, I might want to put the word out there for a few weeks before.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, starting with the food trucks, and I know Wolf was pushing that that would be.
Yeah.
I've looked into that for employee lunch before too, and it is a lot.
So this would be like daytime, not afternoon, evening, right?
Four type thing, is that what we told them?
Twenty-third available, is that, we want to try to put a date on here?
Fire torch.
Oh. A lot of just gonna flip it up. Like, is your guys, what month is that?
Sounds good to me. Twenty-third or the thirtieth is open for me.
Um, can I just, like, let's take a look at our days too.
Yeah.
Let's plan on the twenty-third or the thirtieth.
All right.
All right.
Um, I'll. Look at our count. We got a lot of trainings, stuff coming up, cause it's um the renewal year. So I want to make sure stuff available too.
Right. I mean, how many people do you think from staff?
I'm gonna want to have a couple of people stationed in the building and then Ron outside. I'll come out my chef's side.
Okay. Hopefully Wolf's available. I know he uh. Was kind of pushing for this, so hopefully those two dates work for him. I know the previous two Saturdays aren't gonna work for me. I'm gonna be away, but that's fine if. We can decide if someone else. Wants to go and if I can't make it, you know, I I don't want to be the one holding up everything, but. I think it gives us more time on the twenty-third and the thirtieth to get the word out and everything too.
Yeah, I'd like to. If I, you know, maybe put it up on, you know, on the town, on, if those.
Yeah.
Flashing boards and.
Or even out front here on the side.
Side as well.
Yep. Do a Facebook. Push that type of thing.
Do push notifications by email too.
Yeah, yeah. And then invite our reps, counselors. Whatever town. Employees, all that type of thing. All right, that sounds good. All right, so let's move on. So that's forty. Um, I guess we're pushing that off tentatively to September twenty-third or thirtieth. You want to make that change, Amanda? Um. Ongoing salt committee meetings. We just had one. Was that?
Thursday.
Last week, right? And then there's a doodle poll floating around for. Something else too, right? Is that still active?
That was. That was for this.
That was for this?
Salt meeting, yeah.
All right. Um. I guess the question was, do we want to do another one in the fall? We did this in August. September, October, November, December? I don't know, what did we?
Kind of work to do. Already get. Have the next week, we want to make sure that uh stuff is going now. Not gonna do anything for going out to residents. Prior to salt season.
Yeah.
So. It's been quiet, we just leave it on there, but fall. Um. We'll see, see where we're at if we're ready for another meeting. Might be sooner rather than later.
All right, so you want to say um. Send out doodle poll for. Fall meeting? Good with that. You go with that, uh Amanda, you get that one, number forty-three?
Yep, do you just want me to change this one or close this one out and move to the next one?
No, just change this one goes from summer to fall, I guess. All right, I think, I think we closed out forty-seven, forty-nine.
Yeah.
Uh. What's fifty-seven? Did we close that out too?
So that one, um, Amy had given me. Should we go?
I thought we did.
Time limitations that. Is there some sort of question about um? How far back we can go, and so we are look back. Is the refund policy? So it would be a three-year look back if something. You know, wasn't reading well, or you know, there was an issue. There's no way for her to.
Was that a question by someone at the last meeting?
So, um, she said.
Don't remember.
That looking, that you can't um per account, per account. If you put a limit on them, it'll flag it, but you'd have to go into every single account and flag it that it's over a certain amount.
You'd have to put a target, a limit in there and have it, yeah.
So, yeah, she only, she doesn't have any, like, put in what their allocation was on the plans or anything. There too.
I thought last meeting we kind of said, we're, we're kind of. We can't really have the flexibility to do the tracking of usage. Think. It's just the way it is, I mean. All right, so I think we could put that aside, put that away basically, number fifty-seven then? Thought we did last time too. Maybe there was that one question left. I mean, if you guys are good with fifty-seven, I don't know if there's any more information you want to know on that one, but. I think we've kind of exhausted it.
Nothing's keeping me up at night with that one.
All right. All right, so number uh. What do we do? All, you got, you keeping track of those, Amanda, that we're getting rid of fifty-seven as well?
Yes.
Uh, okay, so fifty-eight updated information, mineral graphs.
We sampled on August ninth, so we don't have those results yet, so we bumped that to September.
All right. So change that, number fifty-eight in the right column to September. Um. This customer water quality complaints, discoloration, that's, that's kind of an ongoing thing. I know we did talk about it last month.
All right, great shape. Let's see, one, two, three. I don't know if I can remember. Survey one, two, three. So we're, we've tracked complaints with, um, we've actually added more codes. So, um. To be more specific, if it was regarding, you know, manganese, black gum, that type of thing, um.
Is it GPS based too, or or um, did Brian um incorporate that?
It'll populate a map, so.
Yeah.
Areas that.
Yeah.
It's on one side, but then on the other side, so you go in and um. We track separately. So if there is a loose static, chlorine smell and manganese, there would be um. Two complaints in there because they're separate, so that way we can track chlorine separately from this.
Yeah.
Then we have to go in and create a work order, and the work order gets the tech over there to um figure out. If there's any issues or whatever, um and then talk to the customer, then they complete the work order and that stays in elements. So we're 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 on it.
All right, um.
Like monthly reporting, but we don't have enough data right now.
Yeah, I'm thinking maybe on that one, we just change the right column instead of saying July, maybe just bump it out, maybe revisit this quarterly or something. If you wanna make it like um just a report on it. And if there's nothing, if there's no correlation, then there's really nothing to talk about, but if we keep tracking this over time. We may see some correlations with certain complaints in certain areas, and that's that's kind of what we're looking to find. So maybe if we revisit this like on an ongoing basis, maybe every three months. To change it to um, yeah, that'd be fine. So October, change that right column to October on number fifty-nine, Amanda. Um, I think Ron, oh, go ahead.
Was just saying, okay, to.
Okay. Um, I think you made that letter on that kind of pertains to number sixty-seven, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so there was a letter that was added here.
Feel free if anybody has any comments on it.
I read, I thought it was well done.
Yeah.
I don't think I had any real um art pictures changes. Yeah. Um, the second line, the first sentence, just I think instead of chlorides, just take, kill that S on chlorides. Sodium and chloride levels. But other than that, it looks good. So um. I didn't see a signature, but I'm assuming you're gonna sign it, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that was good. I think I think that was well done. The graphs. Kinda tell a lot. And I I like the closing. It's to the point, but not overly forceful, but it definitely promised them. That we're looking for a reply. To get together and talk about this, so.
And uh it's probably worth mentioning as well that in our salt meeting uh. I just lost his name. Thank you.
Yeah.
Who's gonna try to uh?
Well, he was gonna try to uh reach out. DOT.
DOT as well to to get some response.
As you can see in the letter, we've been trying to, Ron's been trying to get a hold of DOT to put some signage on. They maintain part of continental and industrial drive and. There's some signage we need to uh update, put an aquifer protection signs there. Kinda looking to get the commission to do that, and they haven't really responded to you ever.
I could pre-mark the area.
Yeah.
Driving some stakes and painted them and wrote MBD down to.
Okay.
Now just if. Call it a on the big save on target. It's on target anymore.
Um, yeah, whoever the company is, it does the utilities.
On target.
We were talking about just doing it if we don't hear from DOT, but I don't know what your thoughts are on that or not.
For that too, but.
I don't know.
I'm gonna probably, I would probably have to rent or. I don't think the town, if we don't have permission, I don't think the town would.
Yeah. I mean, let's, now that, you know, let's give this letter a chance, follow up on it.
Yep.
And actually follow up with Steve Landry to see if he's following up.
He's already made contacts. He's already tried to get ahold of his contact and realized his contact retired four months ago.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So who's?
Let's see, so really quickly.
Commissioner Cass, that's going right to the top, basically.
Yep, that's the. He's in charge of them and.
Seats as well.
Do you think I should?
Yeah, CC Scott, um Steve Landry on this, definitely, cuz then he'll have. The contact who we're trying, he'll have, you know, this letter in front of him and say, hey, you know, did you get that letter from MBD? What are you gonna do?
Should I do it? He got any state reps on there as well? I may drop off the last one there. I don't know.
Yeah, the governor, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what he's going to uh.
Send everybody up there, see somebody might.
I know. Um, yeah, I don't know. What do you guys think? Take the governor off that.
Governor?
Yeah, he was gonna CC the governor on this letter, but I don't know if. Do we wanna do that? I don't know. Keep it on there. I don't care. He's not gonna do anything. He's leaving anyways.
It's true.
Um. Steve Landry.
Town reps. That's what I was thinking, uh town reps and maybe even uh.
Maybe the town uh DPW um Laurie, is she more plugged into this?
She and John are both part of the salt committee.
Yeah.
You also see them as well and.
Yeah, just so that what they, you know, I think they're gonna appreciate that we're we're also reaching out to people besides them, I think. When Kyle was here, he made the statement at the town council meeting that we're picking on the town, but there's other players that are. More responsible for the salt issue than my town is and. You know, I kind of feel sensitive to that, so I don't want, I want the town to see that we are trying to follow up with other entities as well. Yeah, copy them on it. Be good for them. They'll see the letter.
The Senator.
I mean, you're gonna send this by email, right? You're not gonna fold this up, put it in a.
I couldn't find an email for.
Well, maybe to him, you should do it, yeah.
I tried calling, we could not, they don't. You know, she did not produce their emails on any website.
No kidding.
Every single phone number for the problem, for the top people there, all the same, it goes to the executive.
Just like the main number. Oh, my God. Can hide out.
Yeah, but aren't the emails all based on the same thing?
Not necessarily, because they might use the initial or not, or Steven or Steve.
Hmm.
Ah, that's. Wow. Okay.
The executive secretary. Gotta get to the gatekeeper.
Be nice to send it um certified. But then they probably can't serve it to the guy if there's nobody, if they can't find him, right? I don't know how that works.
Yeah, but I feel like if you send it certified to the DOT building.
Yeah.
His attention.
You wanna do that?
Get certified letters here, I saw. Might be me, um, they just wanna know my son or whatever.
Right, right.
Hey, I mean, let's do that, cuz it's gonna give it a uh maybe a.
Let it's gone.
Yeah. Yeah, then we could.
We've done our due diligence. We've done everything we could do.
As opposed to an email, which is cuz it's going to someone's junk box and never see it. There's no evidence, so I would say. Do it certified to the commissioner. And I think everybody else can probably just be emailed, you think?
Probably.
Whatever you want.
Yeah, I'm actually. I'm wondering if I should try uh the one I've been emailing. Didn't never respond. I'll CC him on it.
The DOT, yeah, yeah. The more the merrier. No, it's a good letter. I I like it. I'm definitely all for it. Think it was well done. All right, any other questions on that? We can move on um to the next, uh what number are we on? Sixty-eight.
That one can be um.
Yeah.
Tired because we were denied the. Uh, the grants for those.
Right.
So do we wanna wanna retire it or do we wanna keep looking?
Keep looking? I think that's, I was gonna say that, even if we retire it.
Whether it's gonna be a loan or a bond or whatever, cuz we still need to pay for it, so we're mostly looking for grants.
Yeah.
So we're not really, we're looking for.
Yeah, you know what? You probably wanna add that word in number sixty-eight, say investigate if grants. Or grant funding is available. Cuz that's really, you know, that's that's what we want.
Right.
So um I don't know, just leave an open date on that, and at least that way it'll refresh our memory and we can. Ask around again at some point. All right, number seventy-two. Solutions for a discount paperless billing.
Cuz it's too manual that we've discussed.
Yeah, we did talk about this last month, I think, right?
Yeah, I needed to go list of reasons why. So I think that can just come off.
Yeah, I don't remember putting it out till November, but. If everybody thinks they should retire number seventy-two, then I'm okay with that. Uh, capital fund balance policy, that's already been done, right?
So that could be considered done.
So seventy-five, we can retire that one today.
So I have that one retired from last time. I just didn't hide anything from last time. So you guys could all see it and make sure that I was clear in my understanding.
Yep, all right, we're good. Uh, this irrigation ban thing, we can let that ride. It's not in a very um important thing at the moment. Um, just keep it in November if we can revisit that or not. Seventy-seven, uh meeting request form, I think we did some of this, right? Yeah. All right, so I think that one's probably been retired too or can be then, number seventy-seven.
Seventy-eight just needs to get hit.
Seventy-eight, yeah, I guess that we kinda gave up on the old uh. Zealite. All right, so seventy-eight's gone. Number seventy-nine, update on waterline extension status, uh. Is that on? This is like ongoing or what is this?
So that would be.
The two, twenty-five million dollar grants.
With the grants that we've been though, Seaco Bay water made extensions as well, I get it.
Right.
We did look at some uh during ninety, eighty or ninety percent draws. I do need to give them a call back since Seaco Bay's uh Debbie will speak. In Goldberg, some of the change that I had requested.
So you're making sure everything is up to our standards with the hydrant spacing valves, wherever, that type of thing, right?
Yes.
And we're doing a court stop at every um lot?
Yes.
Even if the customers haven't agreed to connect yet, right?
Yeah, they, yeah, it's gonna be a curve going on everywhere.
Yeah, okay. That'll keep us out of having to cut the road open and all that in the future.
As far as the two um one and a half million grants, um still trying to work on a time where we can. So we have to do a uh a uh environmental study with that, so I did talk to Keith. He feels they can still handle the work. Um. Actually, it's gonna be uh. Lost your guy's name. It's gonna be somebody else I haven't worked with yet. Underwood, it's gonna be kind of leading it up.
With somebody at Underwood, right? Consultant?
Yeah. He's gonna be running it, but he's gonna. Some person's gonna be pretty much handling a lot of the work, um. We're just trying to set up a day right now to do some walkthroughs of the the roadways, the road areas. Um. I think the town involved in it ahead of time, just because the funds are limited, so I wanted to exactly what we need to do. If there's gonna be any kind of reconstruction, really, if it needs to be in the road or if you're off the road, that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, see what's the um what the scope of the design plans we're gonna need if, you know, they're gonna need, hopefully we don't need to like. Survey every utility along the corridor, I don't know how. Yeah, I don't know how uh explicit.
Right, hopefully we don't have to do that detailed. Well, see, I wanna do it on the cheap, but I wanna keep the cost down, I guess.
Yeah, good for that one and a half million to go into the infrastructure and not all into this, all that surveying and stuff. Might not really need to be all done to that extent.
Mine's depending on how detailed the what the um. Environmental review is, uh that may be an extra cost that wasn't covered under the engineering. But hopefully it.
So who was asking for the in the environmental review? The DS is. All right. All right, anything else on that one? All right, the wholesale agreement is in force.
Yes.
So um. Is that was the intent of this number eighty? I don't know. I think it's it's. It's signed, it's in force.
Yeah, it's.
Do we need, can we put this aside then, number eighty? I mean, there's. I don't know if there was any other intent with this number eighty other than. Just once it's signed, then it's done, right? All right, so. All right, so Amanda, I think you can retire number eighty. Uh, number eighty-one, we still gotta do.
No.
We still gotta do another public hearing, right?
No.
Oh, that's right. I remember that. All right, so that's that's done. It's gonna be effective on uh October first. I like we're crossing a lot of stuff off here. So number eighty-one can go as well. Uh, eighty-two, I saw pictures, a picture in the um.
It's all complete, the.
The column, the test columns at Wells four and five for our audience.
I had uh Brian pick up a couple five gallon buckets from depot. So we'll get the media seven today. They took two buckets. Do the same at four and five with those returns, we actually have media.
Saving that in case we wanna run tests on it for any reason that we need to.
Well, any kind of a pilot test, I think we wanna run our media as well and.
Okay. Maybe this is something where we can now start looking at setting up a pilot test where we might let them even. Look at some zeolite or something like that.
Zeolite or yeah, when we start getting into the residents.
Right, I think um Lynette and um they have a um. A work order to.
Yes.
Pursue this, right?
Yes.
She was giving us some.
Yeah, she was saying that she was gonna contact some of them to set up, see what they could set up for us, cuz they were all offering to do it for free.
That's right, that one's.
The water comes up, it actually goes from the bottom up.
Oh, it cuts?
Yeah. I can't see where the pipes go anywhere other than to themselves. So there's a blue line.
Right here.
That's the feed. Yeah, I see it. It was camouflaged by the blue paint.
Drain.
Uh, yes. All right, thank you, Ron.
So these have like how many different uh? Bunch is like one, three, four, right? So this is this basically analogous to twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five and on.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah, you could do this for other people in charge of.
Like a big lab director.
So each one of these uh little canisters between the flanges can be pulled out and filled up with media and whatnot?
Yes.
Okay. Nice. It looks like a lot of bolts.
Looked, I believe to pull the top off and throw it that way. It doesn't actually have to come out of the.
All right. Good. So, all right, so Underwood's pursuing that uh as a scope of work and, you know, they'll probably get back to us in some point in the future.
Yep.
All right, um, so number eighty-two, we'll just leave there. Uh, eighty-three, review lockbox in full three months before contract renewal. That's due in December, January. So they're not gonna do anything there. Um. We had any action items to this today?
We.
I just have for your just update on our portal that we've got fifty percent of our customers are using our portal. Um, fifteen, almost sixteen percent are signed up for e-bills, who know whether they're paper statements to those. Customers and just over seventeen percent are on auto bill or auto pay, excuse me. So no incoming checks, so again, that offsets the lockbox. Uh. And then I just, I had put on mine, just to kind of started looking at upgrading the financial system. But we don't need to discuss today. We can move that to another time.
I think Wolf wanted that.
Oh, yeah.
We talked about them, so I don't know if you wanna add it or not.
Aaron's pointing out a request for a website update.
Wolf wanted to add that as like eighty-four last time.
You remember that, Amanda?
Yeah, Wolf, Wolf wanted um either updated pictures or to remove that off of the website.
He removed the old information and she's waiting on new.
Anything else that we talked about today that should go on the action items? I can't really think of any, but.
Um, for me, a research pricing for PFAS.
Well, that's already in here on the action, all right, so I think. Yeah. All right, I mean, I don't.
One page now.
That would be nice.
Crazy.
All right, good. So that that's everything that was on your list that we didn't hit before. That page you had, the upgrading of.
Upgrading financials, and again, we can discuss that further at the next meeting. Or now, whatever you guys like. It's just something I've been kind of looking into on the side.
Right.
Uh, this QuickBooks cannot do a lot of the things we've had grown it.
So I was wondering, um, I don't use, there's this thing in QuickBooks called classes. You can classify certain things.
Yes.
Are you using that?
We are.
All right.
So how we use it is we define it by our three departments. And then also by our different treatment plants. So for instance.
Okay.
Salaries, we do add bed distribution or treatment. If we buy a pump, I can put it to treatment two and nine or treatment seven and eight. So that's.
See where the money's being spent and what treatment plan type thing. Alright, I just wanted to make sure we, cuz I know I'm the, I use QuickBooks for my business, which is a fraction of this this business here. But I don't need to use classes, but I know they're powerful and that how you can use them, I just want to make sure that. You are using classes and if it's still not giving you the flexibility, then I agree. To look into something that you think might be better.
The biggest thing, as I mentioned, items to include um. The New Hampshire Department of Revenue Chart of Accounts, QuickBooks cannot do. It's fund accounting, which is has lots of segments. QuickBooks captured four digits, I mean five digits. Um reoccurring and auto reversing journal entries. There are the same journal entries that are done every single month and I have to manually redo them every single month and then turn around and reverse them. Um purchase orders in encumbering, we do our purchase orders in Excel right now. And a paper purchase order. So. Having something within a system that once a purchase order is in, it's automatically encumbered, whatever sheet got used at the end of the year. And it gives you a tally of where you are, where any of us could go in and say. But the many times joke on how much is left on this purchase order, she could just go in and look. There's no longer a manual process to go on Excel. Uh and then also a purchase approval um. If Dan Treatment Foreman wants to buy something large. He can put in a purchase order request, it goes to Brian to be approved, to then go to Ron to be approved. So then the purchase, there isn't me running around trying to fill the signatures for everybody.
Still more automated, streamlined?
More automated, and then the other thing is just project and grant management, you know, we just did our three treatment plans all in Excel. Well, with Underwood's help. A grant with, we don't seem to be ending with projects, so. Being able to say this was the project, this is how it's getting funded, being able to see that tracked throughout a system.
And that doesn't happen with QuickBooks?
Oh, no.
Okay.
And then also possibly bringing payroll in-house, right now we sub it up to a third party. And there's only seventeen of us, so in-house payroll could save us a lot of money too.
What are we paying for payroll service?
It is. I think it's it's by fees. Each payroll, and I think right right now we're at about sixty dollars a payroll, so sixty times fifty two. And then there's the taxes, which I think is a blanket two thousand and then anything over twenty, but again, we're under the twenty. So it's not a lot, but.
Well, I'm just thinking it could offset the cost of the software, you know, if that's possible to incorporate that.
And there were also some. Positions that were also budgeted within this year that I don't think will need. That could potentially, but I also know that.
Okay.
Talk about this more towards twenty-four, twenty-five, working that into capital budget, but then with the capital. Improvement plan twenty-four, twenty-five is looking. Like there's a lot of projects going into that, so it's just more of a putting it onto your radar.
Yep. Alright.
Yeah, be open, looking at pricing and that kind of stuff. I assume it's monthly subscription these days.
Everything is, the other thing that I'm also. Is software that's module based, so potentially getting something that. Financials first, and then maybe starting with payroll and then maybe started like. We can bring other things in so that maybe, you know, five, ten years down the road, we don't have seven different softwares. Maybe it could all be in one.
Yeah. That would be nice. Um, do you wanna make an action item on this?
I think, I don't know if you, I mean, we can make an action item and I can keep you updated with the people that I'm talking to. And those, the four companies that I've been looking at. Uh, I've worked with Tyler when I worked at the school district, they are great, but they're. Completely expensive. Um Springbrook is out of Oregon. They are um. Just utility municipal base, they also have a utility billing module. And then municipal technology systems was just created by municipal resources that you. We've actually done a lot of business with for other things, they help with rate studies for salaries and and other municipal type. Contract work, they've now created their own financial software. Um trying to get on to their schedule for a demo because apparently it got out that their software is really good. And the salespeople can't keep up, so I've actually. Through the financial forum, found people, I've talked to people who are actually using it before I even talked to the company. Because they can't even answer the phones picking up. And I've talked to two people so far and they're like, it's the best, and I'm like, well, listen, my brother, like, oh, yeah, we can see that.
Really?
So Amsterdam, New Hampshire based, written by municipal DRA people.
Really? Which one was that?
That is the municipal technology systems.
Okay.
So I can put it, just kind of give you an action item and just keep you updated with where I'm poking around.
Yeah, and that would just be an ongoing thing with no like end date at this point, but just keep us updated on what's going on. Um, so I guess that if you wanna add that one, Amanda, what was that, number eighty-five? Which is just um like ongoing update on financial accounting software. Options or something, maybe?
Okay.
Alright, and employee handbook.
That. Just kind of updating, we updated the vacation policies and COIT boards going through it. And the last revision was, I believe in. In its entirety in twenty twelve. Also just kind of reviewing each of them, catching them up to date. With things that have changed with policies um. Just in general, um Amy and I are both working on that to. I've kind of wrote it to one, she's like reading it as an employee to see what makes sense, what doesn't. Versus me reading it more of an HR person. So that it's understandable to people who actually have to sign off, it's a yes, I read it, understood it. I'd like them to actually understand it, so.
Cuz we didn't, we did approve some changes, right? Just recently?
Yes.
So that's gonna be incorporated into this? Alright, alright, alright.
It's just more of a. See what needs to get updated, make it a little prettier and.
Okay.
My payroll company has a service where I can create a handbook with a template and that sort of thing and yours might too. That would maybe just give you some ideas in terms of compliance and that's for us.
And that's I I Google a lot, but. What's the policy for this? What's the policy for that? What are new policies that are in more current books?
Sure.
So, yeah, I've been doing a lot of that.
That's right. Do you want an action item on that? Is there already one listed or um?
For a potential like October, November for you guys to um read or read through.
Alright, so let's do that for um number, make it number eighty-six action item for employee handbook update. Sound good? Don't scare you away. Alright.
I'm gonna fit on page anymore.
I know, right? Alright, so I think we're good on the action items, everybody um. Old business, anybody have any old business? Nothing, the only thing I had, I sent an email around and I was just thinking about um. This was related to the sodium and chloride reduction meeting, I think I blind copied this missioners. Um, just some ideas I had about um. And I know you just said something about earlier. Are you planning on sending letters out? Um, we did this before, right? We sent letters out. Asking for people that are grandfather for their cooperation and minimizing salt and asking them to come and join our salt committee. Meetings. Yeah, the ones in a wellhead protection areas. Is everybody? Um. Okay, cuz I'm thinking more of um. I don't know if we wanna, it seems like it's a big task, I would think, to include all of the single family residences there. And I'm kind of really looking at more of the larger parking lot lands owners, you know, Continental here. Um and others that might be in our wellhead protection areas, but um. Maybe just kind of hitting them again. Since it's before winter's coming, so if they're planning on their um. You know, salt, they're setting up their contracts now, I'm thinking. Um, and maybe even use the same letter as been sent before or something, you know, with these graphs, like you sent. Where you're gonna send to the DOT. Um. And, you know, of course, they, a lot of those sites are not obligated, they're not. They consult, there's no one, there's no restriction on the salting that they can do. So I don't know if you wanna distinguish between grandfather to non-grandfather. I would think pretty much all of the ones on Continental. Are probably grandfather. Has there been any new, I can't imagine you have very high open bid on that kind of letter. What do you mean that? They they're just gonna throw it?
Yep.
Well, that brings up the next thing is I'm thinking we should do a salt bylaw, cuz everyone's gonna throw away everything we ask them to do. After the town council would need to do that. Yeah, so use bylaw.
How do you do that?
It would be more sort of ordinance.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, but what I was gonna suggest. Maybe uh so we'll. Once season starts, as we drive around and we're looking at the different lots, if we see somebody uh.
Send letters to.
Exactly, obviously, if somebody is grand. If they're not grandfather, then they're not abiding by their restrictions, we can report that to.
Right.
Um. Calm down for a cease and desist, but if they are grandfather, then we can send the letter out, you know. Explaining everything and what we're.
So kind of like the main gist of this letter, but this email was um. If we do need to get a salt restriction bylaw in place to have any. Real enforcement action, there's a lot of sites that are grandfather that are just gonna take the thing, go like, I don't have to do this, throw it away. But the town council is gonna be the body that has to institute this. And they've already, we've I've already been in front of them a couple times, latest one was when they changed the salt use policy last year. The town, the way the town salts the roads. And I mentioned something about a bylaw, we're trying to be proactive first, so we don't need a bylaw. And they've asked, they they asked me, well, what have you done to reach out, you know, and I did mention a few of the things that we've done. And the point is, I don't think they're gonna be willing to entertain. The whole process of creating assault bylaw. Unless they know that we've really done all of the things that we can do. In our power to notify these people, to ask them for their cooperation, even if they're grandfather. And I think the more of that we do. And if it doesn't have, if it if there's no, if there's nothing that comes from it, if everybody just throws those letters away. Then we could say, look, you know, we've sent letters out on this date, this date, this date. We're still only getting this group of people in our salt committee. And our wells are still increasing in salt, we've tried. I think if we go to them and say, we need you guys to create a salt use bylaw, they're gonna say, what have you done? To on your own, so I wanna make sure we're creating a track record of. Reaching out and doing what we can outside of regulating, you know, and no one wants regulations.
I understand.
So I'm just trying, if if we just don't do anything and we go and ask them for assault bylaw, they're gonna say, no, do your own, do your, it's your problem, do your own homework. And I would, I'm trying to get the homework done before we go.
But yeah, restricting it to large parking lots and things like that, I think is really simple.
Yeah, cuz I don't wanna put a burden on the staff to have to send out, you know, five hundred letters, I think we could shrink this down to. Fifty or sixty or less.
Part of the uh, you know, in talking with the town, if we are asking for it, we can note that we're also doing the um. With the grant.
Right.
Watership planning grant, the extensive grant.
Right.
For system um water ship ma- maintenance measurement plan. It's what we're, the goal of it is, and that could be also a recommendation off of that to.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I like tagging in with that.
Yeah.
My. So what you were just talking about would be doing like a salt use ordinance, right?
Right. I don't know if what's it, what do you wanna call it, an ordinance?
For us, it's bylaws.
For them, it's ordinances.
Right, that would be.
So we had Carrie look into this and I believe she said, we don't have the authorities to institute one on our own.
But the problem is, is then we are at their mercy to enforce it. We can enforce it if it's there.
No, but we can drive around, this is what I've been doing, we can have some of the staff, instead of having the irrigation police out in the summer. Those same people doing the irrigation policing can do the salt policing.
Same people that do the regular, the other, you know.
It's all these, our staff.
Then install the water lines or fix the height.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. But um, I mean, I did it, I, there was a property on Continental, I drove by and I do this once in a while, I drive up and down Continental like a fool and look. There probably is, and I I park in the parking lot and I take a picture and even a video. And I showed Ron and he sent the letter, and I don't know if anything changed.
They see.
This one particular property.
It took a little bit to get to the right person.
Yeah, that's. Right.
It was.
And that's the problem with a letter, the letter's not gonna make it to the right person.
Right, it's not the person putting it down, it's gonna make it to the owner of the lot. They're not, and if if part of the issue, I think there's a lot, like a lot of people use third parties, so.
Right.
The owner can be so-and-so property man, ownership or whatever, but then you have the business. Let's say like a Shaw's or something. Shaw's may be the one subbing out. The winter maintenance, it might not even be the property owner that owns winter maintenance, it could be the tenant.
Yeah.
So then you're sending a letter here and you're. You know, that kind of.
Right, and and we found out at that last salt committee meeting last week was the Green Snow Pro offers. Liability protection as be, if you're, if the people applying the salt. Are Green Snow Pro certified, that means, but they have to track it, how much they're putting down, they have to fill out these forms.
And then they can't.
And if you do all that, the owner and the contractor. Are afforded some limits in liability for slips and falls under that program, so there's an incentive there. You know what I mean?
Ten letters.
First ever case um that somebody sued both the contractor and the owner. Um, first case that actually went to trial and they were found not liable. So that's like the precedent setting case that they were, they're really happy that. Went in their favor.
Because one of the landowners asked, he was very, I saw him perk up, but he was like, hey, does that apply to the owners too, like us? Steve said it did in this case.
Yeah.
The manager for slate for the management company.
Yeah, it was the. The guy from Fideli who asked about the liability, if it applies also to the ownership. So.
I think it's worth sending letters again before winter strikes. And you know, kind of, and maybe saying something in the letter, you know, we encourage you all to use, you know, green snow. And if there were to be an incident, know that that gives you more liability coverage.
Yeah.
That kind of thing, I think. I would love to do something like that because I think assault use ordinance. Is gonna be like, besides making them use Green Snow Pro certified vendors. It's, there's, how do you, what, are you gonna do like pounds per cubic? Or per square.
Alright.
Mile, like it's like.
Right now, slate across the street, wherever they are. I believe, and we. I believe, and we didn't know the answer to this.
I have to look, I think they have a no salt.
Right, so if they can do it and the premium outlets can do it.
Cause I know, I know in the, I know in the site plan review ordinance, there is. You know, if you're in the aquifer protection district, you have to use. You know, you're required to use green snows and, right.
Right.
But I don't think it says you can't, you don't use any salt, I think it just requires green snow pro.
I don't think so.
Latest sand only.
I think, yeah. I think the new projects in the aquifer protection districts that are being approved by the planning board. Are restricted.
I should know this off the top of my head.
Most, yes, I think there's some sort of.
It's like a restricted salt use and it have to be green snow cert.
They use the green snow certification, I think they, and it does vary sometimes it on. How they word it, so some of no salt, some could be sand only, no chemical deices, there's others that I've seen on restrictions.
Yeah, I thought it was like the same note that gets put.
It is, it's one note.
Or the approval or something.
It's, they make them put it on the plans and I think it's also in the conditions of approval.
Right.
Maybe.
So maybe they're using one thing now, but I know in the past, it has been different restrictions on. The grandfathered proper, not the grand, sorry, the people that have restriction on the site plants and different.
Correct, because the, it was before the ordinance was updated and, yeah.
So if there was a salt by law. Or a, um.
Ordinance.
If it goes to that level. That would be far more restrictive than just asking the grandfather customers to control their salt a little better. I mean, if they can use brine, put down.
Oh, it does say, okay, so. It says for persons in the aquifer conservation district or wellhead protection area, no salt or chemical deicers. Are to be used for winter maintenance and winter maintenance shall be performed by a green snow pro certified. Or a functional equivalent certification contractor, so it is no salt.
That's what I thought, cause I remember.
Actually, it's that's all, no chemical deicers, that's pretty much sand only.
Yeah, that's not even brine.
So that is what the site plan regulations state.
And they're, they're living with it, right? They're, they're living with it, they're still operating, they didn't go out of business, people aren't falling down and dying.
So I guess if we asked for it, we would, that would be basically the entire ordinance.
I guess.
Salt use ordinance, cause then it would just take away the grandfatheredness.
Or you change it up to, to where.
Limited some possibly, brine, yeah, you know.
Brine only can we allow or or can that affect it and it would allow people to have the no salt, now something that they could.
So controlled, I know we're, we're getting way off in the weeds and and I don't wanna belabor this, but, uh. I think we're covering a lot of ground, that's important, and this is probably something we can all talk about with this grant, um.
Yeah.
Project that that J B's coming in on, but as far as like just immediate thing. I'm thinking if we wanna.
Working on another letter.
Yeah, if you wanna put a letter together, I I wanna mention about the the liability, um, benefits.
Breakdown for the Green Snow Pro.
Right.
Would be good.
So maybe let's target sending out a letter in.
October?
October, November or something maybe.
Something for September for, uh, October mailing.
Over mailing, sure, yeah. All right, sorry to belabor all that, but this is important, you know, we got. Millions of dollars of investment and, um, that we haven't, we're just starting to pay twenty years' worth. And if we lose any of these wells to salt, that's, that's like, I can't think of a worse predicament. All right, um, any old other old business after that whole thing? If not, we can move on to, uh, new business. Anybody have any new business? If not, then I guess we can do the superintendent report.
So there's a, I have on there media change on, I'm not started today. The truck showed up this morning to well seven, they've slurry that one truck in. Um, soaking now and they'll, they'll do their, uh, start their backwash tomorrow. That truck is actually staying here, they're actually sending another truck tomorrow to do the, to extract it from well two. Well, four and five, um. Start that process.
So they need two trucks to take it out and only one to deliver.
The way, yeah, it comes to dry and we, and we hit it with water.
Oh, yeah.
Comes in and we create that slurry that pushes it into the.
All right, that makes sense.
The vessel.
So that's seven and eight. We know how long that lasts to us now.
So that's the second vessel, it was, we were running on one.
Right, so now.
I was thinking.
This is the one that's supposed to happen before Memorial Day.
I'm just wondering if we wanna, if we're changing that vessel out for seven and eight much more frequently. Than we originally intended, we should let Carrie know, so that she could tell the guys who are figuring out the damages.
Yeah, that's, that's all, um, I think we, we're, we gave her the numbers that were in the budget. Which I think we're budgeting.
In into the policy or the.
Alright, oh, that should take.
Procedure, yeah.
Whenever we call that.
And we're right online for wells four and five.
Was.
So wanted to do the change out in August, so we're good on that one, we definitely got delayed at well seven and eight for other reasons than than. Our own reasons. Yes, but, um, we're on track. We got that hopefully fired up in a matter of days if we don't have any crazy water.
Just to kind of back it, there was a. Merger with the bulk one. Well, Desert Tech acquired the slurry portion and the regen portion, but, uh, silent.
Yeah.
Is it silent?
I think it's silent. You know, silent and. Merge. So I think that was part of, it was all happening when we were trying to do that change out in, right around Memorial Day, so we had. We had, uh, taken that vessel offline. Anticipating the change, you know, to our clean, uh, our, disinfection of the. Lag vessel, cause we're having that differential pressure issue. That has been fine, so.
Stop building up pressure anymore.
Nope, if.
Wow, nice.
Done.
It's not an R N, it either came with the media or or something, that, so we've.
And we are, and we are getting short chain breakthrough on that, so it'd be good to get now that the, that we're gonna have a new week. Lag vessel.
And then we're sticking with that eight months, we were, breakthrough, we're.
Whatever, yeah.
Do for in August for the change out of four and five.
Cause we broke through in Jan, December. So we are on track, eight months is August. So we're, we're abiding by that procedure as best we can at this point.
And we were. So it was supposed to be Memorial Day, then it was, uh, construction field day, which was the. Books, it was second. Um, I had a call that, that we're at construction field day and I got a phone call, it was supposed to be, it said Thursday. That's only two days. Um, it was actually the following Thursday, it was the tenth, was was actually the scheduled day, that got pushed out to. Um, the seventeenth, which it would went and then, uh, they actually were gonna offer to do it on Saturday. This past Saturday and I said, well, no, let's do it Monday and. They only sold the one truck. The.
The food grade.
Food, uh, food grade clean, that's what it was, was only open, wasn't open on Sunday, so they had a problem. To send the second truck, so they were doing that today and should be here tomorrow.
Next time you talk to them, I'm asking, why does it have to be food grade if we're picking up spent media, bringing it to a.
Just gonna incinerate it anyway.
Yeah, I'm just wanting to, yeah, but I got a little. Yeah, I don't.
Depend on whatever's the last.
I mean, all day long, if you're delivering media to be put into the vessel, it's gotta be clean, but not.
Cause there is a, uh. And I'm just kinda going off and, there is a profile that need to be done. In order for them to pick up the media, so they know exactly what's in there, so I, so they're not introducing anything.
Okay.
From the other, whatever they hold for, it would be my guess, but.
Just make sure it's not a cost that someone's like not thinking about that they're.
No, I've, I've already got a quote, so that's. But it turned the costs anymore and they were actually talking about, I don't know if it would be any cheaper. But there would possibly be a cost savings because they were sending. One truck was already here, they didn't have to send the two trucks for four and five, so still researching that. See if they're gonna cut a sale. Not that I, a big savings, but there should be a savings there.
Yeah, alright, that's good.
Uh, pilot columns are in the. A lot of it will be covered in.
Action items, yeah, I think so.
Oh, the natural gas, uh, rebates that we're working, that I was working on.
Oh, yeah.
Um.
That's what Wendy?
Started with Wendy is that with, with, uh.
Yeah, someone else involved.
Somebody else picked it up and I just lost his name, it's, um. But anyways, that's complete, it's signed, it's submitted and we should be getting, uh. Twenty-one hundred, almost twenty-two hundred dollars in rebates.
Alright, that's looks good to hear.
That's all I have.
What's the, um, construction on the Everett Turnpike widening, where are they on that with the water line?
Oh, actually, um. They did some, so for Priscilla Lane, they just did two test. Test dates out there to see whether the, if if the sleeves. Were long enough, yeah, and they are more than long enough, so there's no work that has to be done from us on our water main or Priscilla. So the next piece they're gonna have to jump to would be, um, Harris Ave and West. What's called, Weston, Weston Road, that were the two, um, toll, toll clauses were.
Oh, yeah.
There's sleeves over there as well, so they're gonna do some test pits to to actually do locate. Uh, see how, see where the sleeves end and if there's any work that needs to be done. And more so on the, well, uh, Weston side. And then we know some infiltration basins and stuff, so when they add stuff like that, so there could be some relocation work over there. But we'll know more when they, they do the test bits and see where we're at.
Alright.
Hopefully there'll be nothing and that'll just. Obviously, we're responsible for the tests, the test pits, but other than that. Relocating.
Awesome. That it, you good?
I'm good.
Alright, yeah, anyone else, um, let's see, we're questions from the press and public. Uh, I can't tell if there's anybody on. Alright, then, um, I guess that's, that's it, so next meeting is September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Let's adjourn.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Aaron, uh, all is in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Ken, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alright, that's four zero zero for adjournment, we'll see everybody next month, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.